Well, thank you. I appreciate it. And first, I'd like to thank the Lodi New Sentinel for making this opportunity available to us. Oftentimes, it's hard to get our message out to the constituency, and so this is a great opportunity for that to happen. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a third-generation Lodi-ian. There has actually been a Mounts business owner in the city of Lodi for over 80 years, so I'm very proud of that. And I think my grandfather, who was the first Mounts business owner, would be too. I work in the accounting industry. I have a small business called Joanne's Bookkeeping Service, which I've been providing accounting services to local businesses for over 25 years. And for the last eight, I've been the manager and tax preparer for Dordie CPAs, a Stockton accountancy firm. You know, my grandmother taught me by example what it's like to help other people. And I watched her for many years, and as a result, I worked on a lot of projects in Lodi. In fact, I was counting just the other day, and I've been a public servant in the city of Lodi for over 20 years. And I started with the Lodi East Side Improvement Committee, and I worked my way through a couple of other committees through the city. And then, of course, ran for Lodi City Council in 2004, and I've been serving as your council member ever since. I've been blessed and grateful for the opportunity to work with many Lodi-ians over the years. And when I look back at some of my successes on council, I could say that I brought the "In God We Trust" motto to the lobby, as well as making Lodi's official model, motto "Livable, lovable Lodi," which was kind of an unspoken motto for over 46 years. I also fought against growth of government in the city of Lodi, and that was very successful with the help of citizens of Lodi. As well, over the years, I've worked on protecting our rights on sidewalk liability and helping to decrease the cost of water meters to the citizens of this community, which I think is going to benefit to everyone. And before long, we'll have water meters so that we can pay for only what we use. I think that's about all I'll say for right now. I appreciate the opportunity again to be here, and I would like to note just a couple of my endorsements. County Supervisor Ken Vogel, I'm the only council member that's currently running that his -- I've been grateful enough to receive his endorsement. I have former Assemblyman and current council member Alan Nakamishi's endorsement, as well as the Lodi Chamber of Commerce, the San Joaquin County Republican Party, and then on the other side of things, the San Joaquin County Labor Council. So I have received a lot of different endorsements, and I'm grateful to receive those. And we'll continue to work hard for the citizens of Lodi if given the opportunity to do so again.
Thank you very much. Next in line, Bob Johnson.
Thank you. I also would like to thank the New Sentinel for putting on this event. You sit here, and you never know what's going to happen when the questions come, and hopefully we'll be able to articulate our positions. I was born and raised in New York City. My wife Carolyn and I have been married for 45 years. We have two grown sons. Bob is a paramedic, married his wife Suzanne, and has a granddaughter Elizabeth, who is Carolyn's best friend. They live here in Lodi. My other son Larry is a television producer. He and his wife Tammy live in Fresno. I spent over 25 years in the securities industry, stocks and bonds, in the sales, marketing, and management area in New York, Los Angeles, and in San Francisco. Most recently, I retired as a real estate appraiser, and now I'd like to say, not too kiddingly, I have nothing to do except devote my time to city business as a council member. I have a bachelor's degree in journalism. I'm a former captain in the Marine Corps, and I am a Vietnam veteran. I have had a record of community service, much like Joanne has indicated. I spent 16 years on the Park and Recreation Commission. I spent three 13-years as a youth sports coach with the Bob's Program. I'm a past president of the Chamber of Commerce. For 11 years, I was chairman of the San Joaquin County Assessment Appeals Board. I served on the executive committee of the San Joaquin Partnership, and I'm a commissioner on the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission. Carolyn and I have resided in Lodi for 33 years. Our federal government's in freefall; so is our state government. I'm sort of happy to report that we're doing better than many, many other communities in the state of California. We're doing more with less. It hasn't been easy. Our revenues have been soft. Sales tax revenue, property tax revenue have softened over the years in this recent recession. Our employment count is down by about 20 percent, the lowest it has been in 16 years. Employees gratefully have taken concessions as far as their salaries and furloughs are concerned. Despite all this bad news, we are still in pretty good shape as a community. I read in the paper just a few minutes ago that the city of that border, 28,000 people, is in the process of filing for bankruptcy, the fourth city in the state of California to do so. I don't think we're anywhere near that, and I pray to God we never ever get there. We have healthy reserves in our funds. Eight years ago, when I went on the council, our reserve in our general fund was about $145,000. It's now at the $4 million level. Our bond ratings remain high. They're at the A and AA level, and in some instances, they've even been increased in this soft economy. We've recently refinanced some of our debt, and we're using the money that we've saved on that to rebuild an aging fire station on the east side, one that is sorely needed. We anticipate the start of a new Super Walmart next year. This, in addition to the Costco and recently own Home Depot, should bring some much, much needed sales tax revenue to our community. Our downtown continues to grow. We have new wineries and new tasting rooms opening all the time. Our TOT tax, which is the Transit Occupancy Tax, our hotel motel tax, is up about 19 percent year to year. So I guess what I'm saying to you, things could be worse, but things are not all that bad. I think we're in a position to ride out the remainder of this recession. I hope to God we don't go into a double-dip recession. I have no prediction about what would happen if that ever hit us, but I'm proud to have been part of a group that has helped move this city forward, and I look forward to doing it for another four years, and I would welcome your questions as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Let's hear from our challenger, Doug Keane.
I'd like to also say thank you, Marty and the Lodi New Sentinel, for giving us this opportunity. I'm a little taken back that I get to even share with these two individuals. I'm proud of both of their achievements and their duration in office. And I'd like to just say thank you at this point for your service. I've been in business here in Lodi for almost 30 years. I started off with a $300 investment that bought me a business license and supplies. I bought 10 machines on consignment, and I built this business. For the last 30 years, I've been serving Lodi, and I'm proud to be able to say that. I've also been a volunteer for a lot of organizations, not the least of which is my most recent. I started collecting water bottles and cans to build wells in third-world countries outside of our community. Inside of our community, I've been the past president of Kiwanis Club and other organizations as well I've been a part of. I'd like to say, when I was young, I didn't have a great direction. My parents were divorced when I was young, and I was homeless when I was in my late teens. And when I started this business, I actually didn't even have a car. I was walking before I started this business. I was walking to Delta to take business management and accounting classes, and then a friend of mine got me started in the carpet cleaning business, and that's kind of what took off from there. I rose to the top of my industry. I became a carpet inspector, an instructor in my industry. There's about 90 instructors in the world that teach certification courses in my industry. I was one of those. A carpet inspector made me an expert in my industry. There's about 70 in the state of California. I also served on a board, an international board, that wrote standards for the cleaning and restoration industry. I was the only one on that 24-member board that only had a high school diploma. I sat around with people that had degrees in environmental science, industrial hygienists, PhDs, and there I sat. It was a humbling experience. I share this with you so you know, when I kind of sink my teeth into something, I have a passion about it. At that point, I was in the top 5 percent in my industry with the education and background that I had, starting with basically nothing. Since then, I can tell you, I became a conservative when I started my business. And that happened, I can tell you the exact moment that that happened, when I got my first tax bill. I looked at it, and I said, "Wow, that's a lot of money I'm giving to the government." I lived on that, what I paid in taxes that year. I lived on that dollar amount for two years prior to that. And so, I'm fiscally responsible, and I'm conservative fiscally. I'm benevolent. I've traveled to five of the seven continents doing missions work. And I can tell you this without a shadow of a doubt in my mind: The United States of America is the best place to live in the world, and I'm proud to be part of Lodi. I chose Lodi to raise my family. I have five kids. Lodi is a great place to raise children, and I have a vested interest in what Lodi looks like in the future. I would like my children, if they so choose to, when they graduate from college or whatever their path in life takes them, come back to Lodi to raise their kids here. So, as a result of that, when I'm asked, like Marty did earlier, "Why would you want to do this, Doug? Why would you want to run for city council?" I have a vested interest in what this community looks like. I can tell you another reason why I'm running for city council. My father-in-law was burglarized twice in a 12-month period. He's a Vietnam vet, and he's an amputee. And he had lots of medicine because of his amputation, and he also had guns because he was a Vietnam vet. He had a collection of them. When he was burglarized, both his medicine and his guns were taken, as well as a credit card. The police were not able to -- thank you. The police were not able to pursue because it didn't escalate to the level of a felony. My father-in-law, when his credit card was stolen, was able to get the name of the culprit. He gave that to the police department, and they still did not pursue the criminal because they said it was too hard to prosecute. This is an issue that we're having in this city. I have multiple stories to share along those lines, but if the police can't do their job, I have a concern, and I need to, as a citizen, a concerned citizen, I need to step up and help the police force, fund the police force, so they can pursue criminals in our town so that gang violence does not continue to increase. Thank you very much.
I'd like to start with a very generalized question about our strained budgets, and each of you alluded to that. How do you think we can continue to keep up our city services and our quality of life in Lodi when the tax dollars are so restricted as they are today? And I'll start with, just to keep it fair, we'll start with Bob.
Very interesting and very, very difficult question to address. If, as I said in my open remarks, if we go into a double-dip recession, I think we have to say all bets are off. Hopefully, that won't happen. As I've said also, the employees have made concessions. They've been very, very cooperative in doing that in order to have us develop a balanced budget. If things continue to deteriorate, we may have to ask for more concessions, or we may have to make some more layoffs, all of which is going to affect public services in some shape, manner, or form. Doug alluded to the lack of response by the police department. Read what's happening in the city of Stockton. I mean, you have to have a gun to your head before the police will show up. What are some of the things we could do to address it? I mean, how about privatization? Is there a better way to do a particular job at a more cost-efficient way for the city of Lodi? And one example I will give you is, a couple of years back, we talked about the possibility of turning over street sweeping to waste management, our garbage collector. That was voted down, or was decided not to do that, but would that be an example of a way we could save money and still provide some meaningful services to our community? I've said time and time again, the big gorilla in the room is our pension issues. We, our hands are tied. We have fabricated or joined with the employees in a two-tiered retirement system, but that will not save us any money for decades down the road. The courts have said our hands are tied on making any renovations in our current existing pension systems that affect the 300-and-some-odd employees we have on board right now. That number keeps going up and up and up each and every year, and we cannot control it unless there's court action that gives us some relief. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Doug, would you take that one?
Can you repeat the question again, Marty? I got so enamored by what Bob was saying that I lost my train of thought there.
Want to vote for me?
I --
Yeah, it was nice. Come on, Bob, you take a valuable time.
I'm sorry.
See what the rest of your responses are, and I'll let you know.
Doug, budgets, tax income is restrained. How are we going to maintain the quality of city services and life in Lodi?
That's a great question, Marty. Thank you for asking it. I know, in my mind, there are certain things that are off the table. Police, one. If our citizens are not safe and feel safe, they're not going to want to stay in Lodi. Secondly, businesses won't come to Lodi, and that's part of the problem, is growing the tax base in Lodi. So, how do we resolve the budget issue by making the environment more friendly for businesses to do business to increase the tax base here in Lodi? So, keeping the city safe is off the table, is not one of the things that's on the table. Secondly, you can't take fire off the table. You have to leave fire on the table. You can't mess with the fire department. We need them. Sewer and water, the same way. Those things stay on the table. The things that stay off the table, the things that are on the table are is everything else. And we need to look at whether through attrition, we can minimize some of the costs. We need to look at new hires, as Bob had mentioned, the two-tiered system. I totally agree with that. Adjusting the pension and pay rate. Look, our city employees are paying more for health costs as of last month, I believe. And so, they're doing their share. We need to do our share. But more bureaucracy and more political maneuvering is not the key. You have to be smart. My mantra in business is "Work smarter, not harder." And we need to work smart, and that's part of the key.
Very good. Mayor Joanne?
Thank you. Would you repeat the question, please?
Sure, of course. With tax revenue restrained as it is, how do we maintain the quality of city services and the quality of life in Lodi?
Great. Well, you know, like with everything, you sometimes need to take a second look at the way you're doing business. And in the spirit of fairness, I would take a second look at all departments. And if required, based on whatever happens with the economy, I'd be willing to take a straight across-the-board 5% to 10% cut in every department. To make sure that we have done everything we can to cut costs, we'd take another look at every single line item to make sure that we're maximizing each and every expense. You know, Bob mentioned the street sweeping and the privatization of that, and it's interesting because our city employees actually negotiated with waste management, because waste management really didn't want to go into the business of street sweeping. And instead of taking it over, we negotiated in their contract for them to pay the extra $600,000 a year so that we could keep the street sweeping in the city of Lodi and have the folks who've been doing that job and know the job to continue to do it moving forward. The other thing is gang prevention. You know, I'm just so pleased that our new chief has went out and got a grant from the state of California to the tune of $284,000 to help initiate a gang task force on the east side, and actually work from the ground up on what that looks like and get youth advisors and counselors on the streets along with the police department, get to the core of the problem. So that would be helpful. And lastly, I would only say that if our economic situation really began to deteriorate, I would ask the citizens of Lodi to consider increasing the revenues that we receive from our electric utility transfer into the general fund. Right now, we have a $20 million reserve in there, and I'm not clear we're going to refund that to the citizens, so I think we should give them the choice on whether or not they want their services to be maintained by increasing that transfer.
Business and families and government, there's two ways to balance the budget. One is to restrict our costs, but the other is to try to do something about the top line. So let me ask a question in those lines. What about jobs? Is there a way for Lodi to attract more jobs to town, and presumably therefore more tax revenue, and to be more business-friendly? And I'd like to start with Doug on that.
Thank you, Marty. When I was chairing the planning commission, we had the largest growth that Lodi had ever seen in its history. We approved the FCB project north of, or west of, Rayleigh's and Temple Baptist Church. We approved the Reynolds Ranch Blue Shield project as chair of the planning commission. Both of those, especially the Reynolds Ranch project, has proven to be an excellent source of revenue stream for the city, with Costco and Home Depot there. Those have really helped, not only with jobs, but with a bigger tax base. When I was chairing the planning commission, this was very controversial at the time. We approved the Wine Country Cardroom. Part of my thought on that process was to move a cardroom away from World of Wonders, where there was a lot of kids, and we wanted to see the downtown continue to blossom and grow, to move that cardroom outside of that downtown area and move it to its current location. As a result, and I'm sure Bob and Joanne would concur with this, we've seen a large revenue stream as a result of that, probably bigger and better than we had anticipated. I took a lot of heat when I made that decision as chair of the planning commission and took some time with my fellow members on that board to maneuver in a way that was feasible for everybody to agree on that project before we sent it to the city council. And I was very thankful that that vote passed, and now we have a larger revenue stream. The next project, I think, that's on my horizon anyways, continue to grow downtown Lodi. I affectionately call it the Yelvick Road when it first came in, and I think a lot of other people did as well. Well, we've done a good job with growing downtown Lodi. We want to continue to make sure that Sacramento Street continues to flourish, and we can do our part to make it more business-friendly for people to come in. I'm out of time. Thank you.
All right. Joanne, jobs and making Lodi more business-friendly, how do we do it?
Great. You know, that's been something I've been concentrating on for the last few years because I've been asked by many members of the community, how do we create more jobs, good-paying jobs that can pay for the quality of life that we have in Lodi? And I'm proud to say that for the last three months, I had been working with a Stockton downtown business, a good manufacturing company that has 120 jobs. We were told yesterday that they officially have closed Ash Grove. They're moving to Lodi, and we have MEPCO Label Company coming to Lodi, and they have purchased the corner of Kettelman and Stockton Street, and they will be expanding their business as well as a rental opportunity. So I'm very, very pleased with the hard work that the staff did on that project. You know, one of the things that we have to do as a city is put an "open for business" sign on the door and make sure that we are available to those businesses that show interest in our city, and let them know what we have to offer. We have, of course, the Enterprise Zone credits, which are huge. There are some people that will never pay state tax again as a result of Enterprise Zone credits if they create jobs. The other thing we have is, if you are a business that's in the wine industry or something that is catering to tourists, we have discounts through our electric utility company by the number of jobs that you offer. We've just lowered our impact fees so that if you want to open up a business in Lodi, it will now cost you less to do so. And now, it's just a matter of putting the right tune in place so that when someone comes to Lodi and says, "I would like to move here," we can roll out the red carpet and say, "You are welcome because we have a community that's open for business, and we want yours."
Excellent. Bob, jobs and making city government more business-friendly.
I think that the comments from Joanne and Doug are, in many instances, spot-on, but might not go a little bit far enough. The MEPCO deal certainly is a win-win for the city of Lodi. One of the things that they said in their press release, that they were impressed with the city of Lodi, was the electric utility rates, which everybody in town says is the highest in the free western world. These people happen to love them, and also are very favorable about the wastewater rates, which they, as an industrial company, have to deal with on an ongoing basis. So, we have something in place. My big bugaboo is what I call the east side of Highway 99, all the land that's zoned over there for industrial use. Who in this room would not love to see another General Mills dump a town? We have got to find a way to make that happen. And in order to do that, we have to not only be reasonable on our impact fees, as Joanne says, we also have to be aggressive in courting people who come to town. They will not wait for us to provide the infrastructure to a site so they can take it over. The competition out there is endless. They have states who will give you free land if you'll come to that community. We have got to find a way to incentivize businesses to come to town. Joanne mentioned the surplus in the electric utility fund. I would be willing, and I've looked at, we've discussed this in several instances and several iterations over the past couple of years, I would take some of that money and hire an economic development coordinator out of that surplus. And if he brings or she brings new business into the community, those people are going to be buying the electricity, and that might be the payback for the investment we're making in. We have got to be more innovative in how we attract and how we look for these businesses outside the community and get them to come here.
With constituents and how to stay in touch with constituents. Any politician, and pardon me for using the P-word on you guys, I use it in the most neutral of senses. We need leaders to sort out the common good, but you are constantly in contact with special interests. You've got employee unions, you've got developers, you've got city contractors, you've got volunteers, all of whom have narrow interests. How do you stay in touch with all the citizens, some of whom may be completely silent on an idea, even if they have an interest in it, and develop what you think is the best answer, the answer for the common good? And it is now Doug's turn to begin.
Well, for me, that's kind of a simple question. I'm in a customer service-related industry, and so I'm in people's houses every day, two, three, four, five homes a day. So I'm in contact with people, and I kind of get a sense of what people like and don't like about Lodi, what their interests are, what their dislikes are about our city. And so, for me, staying in contact with a group of citizens, I do that on a daily basis, and I'll continue to do that. I enjoy what I do. I enjoy interacting with people. Much like Bob, I'm fairly gregarious, and so I enjoy interacting with people. That's why I've chosen the profession I have. So, when it comes to disagreements, though, with particular groups, I was courted by both developers, FCB and Reynolds Ranch Projects, when they came on board. And they had a particular view of what they wanted to do. They're business people. They want to make a profit. I wanted to make sure that our city was still livable and lovable. If I was on city council, I would have never approved the KB project over by Costco. The streets are way too narrow. The fire department didn't like it. I don't know why it got approved or who approved it. I'm not going to point fingers, but the bottom line is, that wouldn't happen on my watch. Because I think you have to have a vision for what people like about the city. And again, I have mentioned this earlier, it's livable, lovable. How do we move forward with livable, lovable Lodi in the future? Well, if you have no vision for what that looks like, you're going to approve projects that don't make sense, and that's what has ended up happening in the past. For me, I grew up in, one of the high schools I went to was in Reno, and it says, "Under the Arch, the biggest little city in the world." Most people don't even understand what that means. Our locals understood what that meant. We were connected. And as big as Reno was at the time I lived there, our locals understood where the local spots were at and what the cool things to do were. Well, I bring that to my ability for the city council as well. I understand what the, I have a vision for what Lodi looks like and how it stays interconnected, and what developments to approve and what ones to shoot down. So, and I think that you have to get a sense of that from your community.
Bob? Have I gone around the circle once too many times?
You're the one that's getting scored. I'll go ahead. I think that the, I think part of my response to that question would be going back to what I said earlier about core beliefs. I make no bones about the fact that I think that Lodi has to grow, and that's going to take jobs, that's going to take industry, it's going to take commercial development, it's even going to take residential development. We can't stay stagnant. We can't go backwards. Now, having said that, we have to do it in a reasonable way. Almost 30 years ago, I guess, or 20-some-odd years ago, the citizens of Lodi did one of the smartest things they could do. They put in a growth limitation on the community. They have told us, "We don't want to become a Tracy," as an example, which grew 17 percent in one year. I mean, we don't want that. I don't want that. I mean, we don't want that. I don't want that. But I'm not, I'm not afraid to sit down with a developer, I'm not afraid to sit down with somebody who is anti-development and find out what they're about. I mean, I'm open, I'm out and about. People have my cellphone number. I'm listed in the phone book. I go to coffee shops. I'm ready, willing and able to listen to anybody. I think the thing that bugs me the most, and Joanne may agree with this, is that we seem to hear from a core constituent, a certain group of people who are constantly either on our back or patting us on the back or kicking us in the butt, whatever the case might be. We have to hear from more people. We can't just hear from the special interest group who may be the naysayers in the community. I know Joanne has said, "Folks, tell us what your thoughts are on this." I say the same thing. I can't make a reasonable decision unless I find out what the community is talking about. And so I encourage you to contact us, talk to us, let us know. You're not going to offend me if you think, you know, "Bob, that was a stupid vote last night." Hey, I've done stupid things before in my life and I will continue to do it again. So, give us your input. We need it.
Very good. Joanne?
Thank you. I appreciate the question. You know, one of the things that I have heard over the eight years that I've served and even prior to that, working with the East Side Improvement Committee and numerous groups, is that I'm willing to listen to everyone, regardless of what side of an issue that you might be on. They don't always agree with your position on certain things, but I am always willing and able to listen to everyone and all positions and ideas. Because you know what? It's my job to be able to take all of those concepts, ideas, positions, and take all the facts that I have and then make the best decision for the entire community. And I wish that more community members would contact us and let us know how they feel about certain things, what they believe their vision of the city of Lodi is. One of the things I'm proud to say that I have accomplished over time is to be able to take citizen ideas and concerns and actually bring those to the city council and turn them into policy and procedure. So I'm hopeful that we can move forward with that same vision so that the city of Lodi is the community and not the city councils.
Two similar questions, and so I'll kind of mush them together. Neither is signed. Don't be, don't be afraid to take a little credit for your thoughts and express what you're concerned about when you sign these up. And I have to thank all of you for participating in this. Being involved in choosing our leaders is what democracy is all about and I want to thank you for being here. Two people in the audience are concerned about crime and violence. One asks, "What would you propose to tackle the violence in Lodi?" The other is concerned about gangs and other criminal activity. How do you propose to keep Lodi safe? Now, by my count, we're going to begin with Joanne. Violence and crime, what can we do?
Thank you. You know, I, this is an issue that hits very close to home for me. Last year, when I was recovering from cancer, I was sitting on my couch and I heard a gunshot and across the street from me, a young man's life was taken. I had been working with that apartment complex on a multi-level issue for months and I knew the problem was accelerating and I knew it was just going to happen. I think we can all feel in our neighborhoods whether or not they're healthy or not. And there are pockets of the east side and areas of Lodi that just are not. And I think that it's going to take not just the police department, but it's going to take more of an action approach to that problem. Whereas you look at the bigger problem, the housing stock that we have. What kind of landlords are allowing people to house criminal activity? Why is the criminal a criminal? Is there something in the home that we need to do to address that if they're gang-related? There are so many multifaceted areas that the city can work on in collaboration with other organizations to help deal with the crime and the violence that's occurring in Lodi. Now, of course, the ultimate solution would be putting more police on the streets, but we have to be creative because we don't have that option. And I think that creativity comes from working with other organizations that have a history in solving gang problems and violence and crime in general. And by creating a collaborative environment, we should be able to find a solution so that Lodi can continue to be the safe and lovely place that we all know and love.
All right. Bob, crime and violence?
A very, very big issue and a very, very, one of great concern to the community. I think that the police are doing an admirable job in attacking the problem. Could they do more? Certainly they could if we had more resources to give them. But that comes with the strengthening of the economy. I think that as the economy grows, we should look at increasing our police presence. The gang issue is a pestilence and it's a problem we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. But it goes beyond that, as Joanne says. I think one of the things that we should look at is as, as the economy grows and as we begin to restaff, and that's a whole other topic, as we begin to restaff from being down 20% on our personnel count, we should look at code enforcement. Our code enforcement numbers, our personnel, are minimal. And that goes a long way to creating a lot of the, alleviating a lot of the problems that we're referring to. I mean nuisance homes, rundown properties, landlords that are not cooperative, the whole gamut just creates blight and blight breeds crime and indifference to crime. So code enforcement, in many instances, is just as important as a police presence. So those would be two areas that I would look to improve upon as the economy grows and hopefully it would help us turn around. We had a, we had a little, what's the word I want to search for? Experiment last Saturday out at Tokay High School, where we brought some at-risk kids, primarily Hispanic kids from the east side, for the first ever Lodi handball tournament. They had a ball. They had a ball. It cost the city virtually nothing to put this thing on. Just a lot of volunteers getting out and helping make the program work. So there are ways to address it. Will it be easy? No. Will we ever, ever solve the gang problem? No. I mean, you're kidding yourself if you think we will ever get rid of it. But that's something we can do to try to alleviate the problem.
Just hang on one second before we move on. Doug, I'm going to hold you up for a moment. Joanne's raised her first rebuttal card.
I'd like to rebuttal that.
Let's, let's hear first from Joanne and then I'll...
I'm not really sure if it is a rebuttal so much as it is additional commentary on the topic.
You, you, you say what you want.
All right, thank you.
You burned a rebuttal card.
Thank you. You know, one of the things that I go back in my history on is working with the Lodi East Side Improvement Committee. And our whole goal was to fight crime, drugs and blight. And I remember the day when there was no code enforcement department at all. And I will say that Mr. Johnson is correct in that that is the biggest solution that we, we have in front of us that we're not taking advantage of. And that is more code enforcement. Making sure that the community feels that they can be the police and the police can be the community. There's a role reversal there that takes place. And the police department used to work on this diligently, but as their resources have depleted, they have been able to do less of that. But Neighborhood Watch is the number one reason that crime decreases in a neighborhood. And if you can do that along with your code enforcement increase, then you have a collaboration that works well that doesn't require additional police officers. So I just wanted to add that commentary on top of what Bob had to say. So it was kind of a rebuttal, but there you go.
You can use the time any way you want. Doug?
Thank you very much.
What do you think about crime and violence? You alluded to it yesterday, sorry, earlier. It's important.
Thank you. I'm just going to go ahead and dovetail on what both Bob and Joanne have commented on, and that's code enforcement. We currently have one code enforcement officer named Nancy. She's doing a lion's job. The lion's share of the work is just on her shoulders. There's not enough hours in a day for her to do her job completely. We, I was, had a conversation with Chief Helms a couple of weeks ago and we were talking about bringing in, funded by the state, another code enforcement officer, part-time, focusing strictly on gang violence. This is a great idea. Unfortunately, bureaucracy kind of got in the way. It was a two-year funded position. Unfortunately, we're kind of late to the game and it's only going to be one year funded at this point because bureaucracy. It took so much time to, to go through the hoops. So part of what both of them have mentioned is the code enforcement. The, the key there is, is that we can actually write a citation to criminals that we can't necessarily arrest on other items, but we can certainly enforce them with code enforcement, penalize them with code enforcement. The next issue is technology. I don't think that we've utilized technology as much as we possibly can. If we provide better technology for our police force, and I'll give you one example, the fingerprint scanners. We don't have enough fingerprint scanners. What does that do? That allows our police force to get an ID out in the field immediately instead of bringing them back to the police station and taking time that way. We can get ID immediately out in the field. What does that do? It allows our police officers to stay out in the field longer, to do less report writing. When they get back, it makes this whole system more efficient. So efficiency is the key here. Again, my mantra in business, work smarter, not harder. And I think we need to be able to do that and we can.
...tonight, and she's not as glib as some of our panelists have been about utility rates. She says, "From what I understand through my research online, Lodi has some of the highest utility rates in the country. What does the council plan to do to reduce our utilities or at least get them in line with cities of similar size? Since our utilities, in my opinion, are outrageous." And I might just remind everybody, there is a complicated set of rates and probably an important difference between industrial rates and residential rates. So, let's see, whose turn to go first? Doug, what do you think about our utility rates? Do we need an adjustment or are we about where we need to be?
It's funny how this question came up. I actually met with Brad Bartman about my utility bill specifically about two weeks ago and I showed him a utility bill that I had when I lived in Stockton and a utility bill that I have currently living in Lodi. I was paying an average of $210 a month in Stockton. I'm paying $425 a month in Lodi. That's ridiculous. That's intolerable. I don't know how we can continue to sustain that type of gouging, personally, from my perspective, to our citizens. Part of that utility bill is going to the general fund. That's unconscionable to me. Why, why am I paying part of the, my fee for electricity to the general fund? We have a $20 million surplus in that. Are we charging too much? I think so. Yeah. Yeah, they need to have a reserve, but I think it's a bit high. We have a double A-plus rating with our utility. That's great. And 20 million is a bit excessive, in my opinion. And part of that, again, is going to the, to the general fund. I don't think any other city would tolerate that. I don't know why we do. I don't know how it happened, but I certainly would fight to eliminate that. So yeah, I agree with the, the weather of that question. I think our, our electric rate is way too high. I have firsthand experience on it. Now, with that said, we came out of a history of bad management at that thing. We've come out of it nicely. I have to hand it to our city leaders for the mismanagement of it, of it almost a decade ago or eight years ago, to, to the point where it's at now. They've done a phenomenal job. But I think that we're paying too much and I think that we could give a break to, Bob had mentioned this, giving a break to businesses that come into Lodi. We can give them a utility break. Greg Lewis started, opened up the Ice House recently. He had to pay $100,000 to get his electric up to code. That's, it's egregious as far as I'm concerned. That's too much punitive for a business that's coming to Lodi. It's not a friendly environment when it comes to our electricity.
Bob, earlier you said that new business in town had been pleased at our rates. What about?
What about what?
What about our rates? Are they high?
Oh, okay. The question, the question about whether they're too high or too low, you know, it circling through this town like water through a hose. The first thing I might suggest to Doug is get yourself an electric utility audit, which doesn't cost you a dime through the city of Lodi. Let them check it out and find out why your rates are so high. Maybe there's some sort of anomaly in there. The question of the transfer, the pilot, pilot which transfers to the general fund, which I think runs about $7 million a year. In Stockton, that's the dividend that PG&E sent to its shareholders. So we're paying that money to ourselves as our dividend. That funds the police department. It funds parks and recreation. It funds the general fund. If you want to take that away, you know, that's a decision the council would make, but where are you going to make up that shortfall? It would have an adverse impact on many other services within our community. I, you know, we can discuss, we can discuss electric utility rates. I'm not too sure. I think that they are as high as many, many people say they are. I do indicate, as I said before, I think that we can use the electric utility department to help pay for itself more than it has been doing now through the use of economic development. I would not disagree with the assessment that maybe the reserve is too high. But that would be a subject of another conversation.
Joanne, electric utility rates?
Thank you. Well, you know, I appreciate your comments about fighting to get the electric utility rates lower. I've been fighting to keep them lower for the last eight years and have lost every time. I've only voted for a rate increase of .3, .6, or .362%, and that was for a wastewater increase. And I think I voted for one garbage increase in the entire eight years that I've been on council. I think our rates are extreme. Now, are they compared to other cities? I'm not sure. I keep being told by our staff that we are in line with other communities. And when I talk to people in Stockton, I say, "What does your utility rates look like?" I look at them and they seem in line with what we have. The difference between our utility package and when you get your bill in the mail and what Stockton gets is that the water's on a different bill, the garbage is on a different bill, it's all disconnected. So I wonder if when you add them all up, they aren't consistently in line. And for example, if you have a six-bedroom house or five-bedroom house in the city of Stockton, your water rate is probably $150 a month. In Lodi, they're still lower. Is there room for us to improve? Absolutely. The fact that we have a $20 million reserve in our utility is excessive. However, our franchise fee is consistent with what PG&E would pay. So if PG&E was doing business in our city, they would have to pay the city of Lodi a franchise fee as well. And I think our founding fathers, when they created our electric utility company in the early 1900s, they had a vision of it creating a benefit to the city by allowing for that franchise fee. Now, if we are going to lower and raise it, I have the understanding from the city attorney that the ordinance that we passed in 2007 would now take voter approval for us to change. So it's not going to be something as simple as a council decision to change that franchise fee.
Start with a question. One of those, one of those issues that's been out there but seldom publicized, a little kind of under-the-radar issue that's going on in Lodi, and I think you know what I'm going to talk about. What about this good old boy network we have in Lodi? Is there a good old boy network? And if there is a good old boy network, who's in and who's out? I'll take Joanne.
I'm going to make this very simple. I'm a girl. I don't know. That's it.
All right. Doug, is there a good old boy network in town and are you, are you a member?
I'm not a member to the extent, to the extent that that statement conjures up. However, I do know this about Lodi, after living in so many different places when I was a kid. Lodi is a well-connected community. Some have said seven people removed. I think it's a lot less than that in Lodi. I could be talking to you, Marty, and as a matter of fact, we had this conversation about someplace we vacationed and you happen to know my ex-father-in-law. So, and Lodi is not, we're very well-connected. There's an interconnectivity of Lodi. From an outsider looking in, it might look like a good old boy system. But I think once you know Lodi and, and you're familiar with the town and you get to know its citizens, you're part of that good old boy network in a looser term. So yeah, Lodi is a well-connected community. I, literally, my kids went to St. Peters and I found out whether which one was, had the helmet on when they were riding the bike and which one didn't because of the people I knew on the route. I mean, it's just a phenomenal little town when it comes to that. And I like that about Lodi and I want to keep that... And I like that about Lodi, and I want to keep that about Lodi. That is one of the precious jewels about this town. So, for me, do we have a good old boy network? I think I'm part of it in the looser sense and the tighter sense. I don't know if I am in the larger scope of that meeting or the, excuse me, the more narrow scope of that meeting, but I do know this about Lodi. It's a great little community. People know each other. That's what makes Lodi so unique and so friendly, and that's what makes the farmer's market so fun to go to. You can't walk 20 feet down that street without running into somebody. When I got remarried, my wife was just so gracious to me. My stepdaughter says to me, "We can't go anywhere without you knowing somebody." Literally, any restaurant, anywhere we went in town, I knew somebody. And so, that's the great part about Lodi, and I love that about it. So, if that's what you mean by that, yeah, maybe there is, and I like it. And if you mean something different than that, well, I'm not so fond of what else you might mean by that.
Bob, what about the good old boy network?
I would agree with Doug. I think that there is a good old boy network to a certain sense, and I'll try to illustrate why I think that exists. The year after we moved to Lodi, we had a house fire. The roof of our house burned off. The fire department was wonderful. They did a great job. They ran around with the wet stuff and the red stuff, and everywhere was fine. While the water's dripping down on us after the fire department's gone, knock on the door, and a gentleman from across the street who we barely knew, because we had just moved into town about a year before, he shows up and he says, "I think you need a drink." And he had about two or three bottles of booze, and I said, "But I didn't know what you drink," so I bought a little bit of everything. So, I had a drink. I think Carolyn even had a drink. But I said to him, I said, "You know, I think I'm having a hard time, you know, getting accepted into this community. I consider myself a fairly gregarious person. I just don't think I'm breaking in, breaking in." He says, "You're doing fine." Every objection I, he says, "You're doing fine. You're doing fine." I said, "Fine. What do you mean I'm doing fine?" He says, "We know where you work. We know where you bank. We know how much money you have in the bank. We know how much money you're getting paid. You're doing fine." So, I had another drink. But I think that's indicative of the way Lodi has been going on for years. Now, will this network change if it exists, and I do believe it exists? I think as the demographics of the community change, as we get larger and newer people come in from the outside, it might dilute some of this, you know, inbred connectivity, if you will. But I think it's there, and I think for the most part, it doesn't hurt anything.
Thank you.
Oh, now you want to answer.
Of course I do. You know, it's very, very odd. My family's been here since 1932, so 80 years in the city of Lodi. And we've never been connected because we were on the other side of the tracks. And it was very funny because when I first ran for office, I had joined Rotary Club because someone told me, "If you want to be part of the network, you have to belong to a service club." So, I joined Rotary Club, and I expressed to my Rotarians as we were driving in a van up to a Rotary event that I was going to run for city council. And he patted my hand and he said, "Well, Joanne, no one from the east side could ever get elected to office in the city of Lodi." And I spent the next year proving him wrong. So, I think even if you live outside of the good old boy network, it's possible to do great things in this community, and don't give up, because I certainly didn't.
Do I use one first or three firsts?
Yeah, one's fine.
I would just like to add to that. When I first moved to Lodi, I lived at 224 and a half Flora, east side, little upstairs apartment. And that's actually where I started my business, out of that little apartment. It wasn't long for me before I felt like I was connected in this town. I felt connected in the five-year mark. I think other people thought I was connected at about the 10-year mark. So, it took longer for other people to think I was connected than it did for me. I really felt like I was a part of this community. I bought a house over 321 Columbia Drive on the east side. I lived over there with my family, still felt connected to Lodi. Didn't feel like, Joanne shared her story about anybody from the east side getting elected. I was, I never felt disconnected, no matter what side of the tracks I lived on. I always felt like I was part of this community as a whole, and I didn't feel like there were, I never got the sense that people thought I was different because I lived on the east side versus the west side where I live currently. So, for me, it doesn't matter where I live in Lodi, and maybe it's because I lived in a lot larger cities growing up. I grew up in Sacramento. I lived in Las Vegas. I've lived in Salt Lake City. I've lived in Reno. I've lived in a variety of different larger communities. And so, for me, the sense has always been, Lodi's a pretty small town. Doesn't matter what side of the tracks you live on. So, that's my take on that.
Marty?
Go ahead, Bob.
Joanne points with pride, justifiable pride, her history, family's long history with the community. That's fine. But, you know, 80 years ago, the good old boys were on the east side. There was no west side. So, as I said, you know, as the demographics change, things change. You know, the population mix on the east side has changed dramatically. The west side has grown dramatically, and that's, you know, that's just sort of a, you know, the way, the way things happen. It happens not only in Lodi but in any community. So, over a period of time, you know, different people are going to be in different positions of influence. But, you know, if you think about it, the east side was the good old boys' network, probably for generations.
Maybe we'll sing kumbaya at the end, but I think we need to tempt fate just a little bit. Joanne and Bob, the two of you have had some pretty serious disagreements in your time on the council, and sometimes there's been emotion behind those disagreements. There's been pretty loud disagreement on occasion. I'd like each of you to think about the extent of disharmony on the council. I won't single you out. Is there a problem of disharmony on the council? And if you think there is, what are you personally able to do to reestablish a spirit of cooperation?
Is this where I get to take a bathroom break?
No, sir. You're going, you're going to speak to that one as well. Bob, I want to start with you.
Okay. I think that most of us council members, and I know that Joanne certainly does, and I believe I certainly do, have some core beliefs as what we think are the most important things that we should be addressing in a council. And sometimes those beliefs are going to come in conflict with one another. I, as an example, was a strong proponent of redevelopment. Joanne was a strong opponent of redevelopment. That's just the way it went, folks. I think that we've had issues in the past where we've disagreed, and I don't know that on many occasions, we may find a common ground. I found myself just last night in the situation that most people would say, "God, that's not the Bob Johnson I know." I voted against development. I mean, a gentleman came to us and he wanted to put 12 units on a particular site. I thought it was too much. Joanne made a motion to go for nine. I said, "Is that a motion?" She said, "Yes." I seconded it, and off we went. Now, there's a kumbaya moment. You know, you should have taken a picture of that. We do find, we do find, I mean, I think as an example, Joanne was not a strong proponent. In fact, she voted against Reynolds Ranch. She voted against Blue Shield. She voted against basically Costco and Home Depot. That's fine. That was her, that was her position, and I respect it. I disagree with it, but I respect it. But when it came time to put forth a commonality for a, the plan for a green belt south of Lodi, which the community insists on having, we had a united council. Now, that issue is still sitting on the desk of the board of supervisors, going absolutely nowhere. But we did our job as a council, even though we disagree on many things during the course of any particular meeting.
Joanne?
Well, I won't use my rebuttal card yet, but I first, before I answer the question, like to speak to Bob's comment about Reynolds Ranch. I did not vote against Costco or Best Buy because, or Home...
Home Depot.
The Home Depot, because that wasn't on the table at the time. It was just simply, we want to jump Harney Lane, go outside of our general plan, and the environmental impact report specifically addressed their water to the water treatment plant, which, oh, by the way, is still not built. So, how do you build a project using water that isn't there yet? And that's why I voted against Reynolds Ranch, and I just wanted to make that clarification. Now, in the spirit of compromise, it's quite interesting. Last night, we did just what Bob explained. You know, there's always an opportunity when an issue comes forward for us to not take the hard line and compromise, and last night was a prime example of that. And I compliment Bob for moving that forward for the sake of the 38 residents that objected to that project. I'd like to speak just a little bit about RDA in that I asked for compromise the entire way so that I didn't have to take a no position, and that was something that the council couldn't find common ground on, and I appreciate that. And there are going to be times that that happens. But I think at the end of the day, we debate, we have our positions on things, and then we get up and we go on to the next thing, because we are all working for the common good of the city. And I think it's to be respectful of each other and the citizens which we serve is our responsibility to be able to represent them in a manner which is not backbiting or argumentative, but as respectful as we can in really difficult situations. Thank you.
Doug, are these disagreements a problem? And if they are, do you help solve them?
Well, I can tell you this. If everybody agreed with me, there'd be no reason for the rest of you all. So, I think that disagreements are going to happen. How do we handle those disagreements? That's the key. And I think Joanne rightly said this, with respect and dignity. If we can treat each other that way, that's the key. We're intelligent adults and hopefully mature enough to handle this position on city council that we can treat each other with dignity and respect. So, yeah, are there going to be disagreements? You bet. That's why there's a five-person city council, because sometimes, you know, you need the majority, and it doesn't always work that way. And last night was a great example of that. There's a 3-2 vote on this project over by SunWest. So, did everybody see it the same way? No. Are we always going to see it the same way? No. But treating each other with dignity and respect's the key. I will share this with you. If I was on the city council last night, the vote would have went differently. I would have agreed with Phil Kozakian and Larry Hanson. So, in my opinion, and I will share this with you as well, since I said that, as a former planning commissioner, chairing the planning commission, we have a process in place. Spark would have done the site plan and architectural review on that. I would have liked, at least liked to have seen what the architectural element would have been and how they would have laid it out on that property before. I would have voted no. I might have voted no. I might have ended up agreeing with these two, but at that point, I would have at least liked to see it go through the process. We have a process in government, and that's part of the process. So, for me, that's how I would have handled it. I might have ended up agreeing with them in the end, but... So, you have a lot of people with differing opinions, and everybody who are nominated or elected to this position to give your opinion and stand up for the citizens that you represent, and that's all of Lodi. I'm a businessman, and I think for me, all of you, if I'm elected, I would for all of you, not just a handful of you or a segment of the population. I represent the whole city of Lodi, and I hope that I can do that my best.
This next question is a challenging one from a, I'll call him a faithful reader. Doug Cheney has always challenged our view of the goings-on in our circulation area, and he's challenging you tonight about the water plant. He is wondering, didn't we, and I'll ask the council members to correct any misstatement of fact, why did the bond funding exceed the cost of the project? Apparently, we passed a $45 million bond, and the project cost 32. And why did we reject a low bid of 23? I might add to that. When this project started out, there was talks that we might get it done for 10 million, and of course, we didn't get it done for 10 million.
The low bid was 23.
I understand. And so, the question would be, was the low bid rejected and why? And why was the bond funding so far in excess of the cost of the project? And I would add, how is it that this thing grew from 10 to 32 million? And it's Bob's turn to go first.
Well, I can't respond to the question about the low bid being rejected. I'm not prepared.
That was not part of my, part of my question. 23 million was the low bid that took the contract.
Then, Doug, then I misunderstood your question. Let's make it, let's make it to the point. You say that there was a low bid of 23.
That was the low bidder that took the contract. The 32 million was the engineer's estimate. I'm sorry if I wasn't a little bit clearer.
Well, then I don't understand the question. Apparently...
Can I pose a question myself?
If you would, please.
We have a communication problem with Lodi. We just settled them anyway. Okay. There was $45 million supposedly in bond funding, and the engineer's estimate for the project was $32 million. The bid came in at $23 million, so where's all the money? How much, how much bond money has been expended so far? And I can't see 45 million. If the contract, if the 23 million, you can't have that much overs and overregional extras and things like that. I just, you know, I would just like to know what the real purpose for the water treatment plant was. It doesn't seem like we really need it.
Which question do you want me to answer?
Answer the 45 million question.
Doug, if you don't mind, I'm going to rephrase just a little bit to make it succinct. We've got a $45 million bond and a $23 million project. Why is that? And why do we need a water treatment plant?
Who's, who's...
And it's you first.
Okay. First of all, the reason why we need a water treatment plant is because I think nine or 10 years ago, the council at the time entered into a contract with the irrigation district to buy 6,000 acre-feet of water at $1.2 million a year on a 40-year contract. That's $48 million we committed to. That's what we committed to, buying $48 million worth of water over 40 years. I am fascinated by the discrepancies on an ongoing basis on our public works projects about the engineer's estimate and what the actual contract price is. I don't know how that happens, but it may be a function, and we're seeing this happening in other communities on other public work projects. They use a set of statistics. In many instances, they use a labor rate from San Francisco Bay Area. They use a lot of out-of-the-boundaries information to come up with the engineer's estimate. And then, when it goes to bid, because we've got contractors out there who are starving to death, they sharpen their pencils and they come in woefully underneath what the original engineer's estimate is. So, I think that's sort of a good thing. You know, if you were right up against it in this soft economy, you might wonder, well, who's doing what to whom? But the original question was, a previous council obligated us to a $48 million water contract, and we needed something to do with it. And the answer was to build a water treatment, service water treatment facility, which will do a couple of things. One, it ensures us some water on an ongoing basis. It does a, it cuts down on our groundwater pumping, and it provides us with a, with a source of very, very clean water from the McCalliver River.
Is that $45 million bond authorization a problem?
Well, you know, the illusion is that there's been some mismanagement and malfeasance in the spending of that money, which I'm not prepared to answer, yet have to pull out all the documents and find out where the money went to. And I'm not prepared to answer that question now, and I'm not even too sure Mr. Cheney's prepared to answer the question.
Joanne?
I'd be delighted. Thank you. Well, first off, I will say, I didn't vote for the water treatment plant. I believe that the folks that were sitting on the council at the time, that they made that agreement with WID for the water, they wanted to use it for groundwater recharge. That was their intention. And then, a new council came on board, and we battled with the conversation for about three years, and we went back and forth between a water treatment plant and groundwater recharge, and the water treatment plant votes won. So, we went down that road, and when we went and took out the bond, we ended up taking what we believed was what was going to be necessary. what we believed was what was going to be necessary. As Mr. Cheney said, we came in much lower than what was anticipated. We were able to do the project for much less. And the remainder of that money was transferred into the water, water meter program. And so, that money is being used for water meters. And that's what's helped keep the cost of water meters down from 1,200 to 300 per household. And I did confirm this with Mr. Bartlam, as well as some other public works people. So, the money is being used for the infrastructure, which was part and partial what the bond was taken out for. So, I think we're using it the way we intended. I'd still like to stretch the water meter installation out further and, and make it no cost to the citizens of Lodi, but I didn't win that battle. Oh, well. Thank you.
Doug, our water treatment plant, what, can you, can you shed some light on the financing?
I can't shed any light on the financing. I wasn't part of the city council when we made that $48 million agreement with WID. I wasn't on the council when we took out the $45 million bond. It seems, does seem excessive sitting here, but hindsight's 20/20, isn't it? And so, you do what you think you need when, when you're at that moment. And I'm glad to see that the, the cost was almost half. So, that's good. I can't answer the question of why we need it. We're facing a dilemma in Northern California with senior water rights and junior water rights that current farmers have, and so does the WID. WID has senior water rights. Now, if we utilize those senior water rights, then it gives us a right to that water. Why is that important? Because Southern California wants to take our water from it. I don't know if you all have heard about the peripheral canal. But those, those two tubes they're going to put in are big enough that you can drive a school bus through one of the, or each of them. They're huge, they're monstrous, and they want to take that water out of Sacramento River before it even gets to, to Delta. And, and this is problematic for us. So, if we don't have rights to that water, and we are not utilizing the rights to that water, we will be short of water in the future. So, it was very far-sighted, as far as I'm concerned, to build a water treatment plant to ensure the rights that we have, so that Southern California doesn't take all of our water from us and then leave us high and dry. So, it was an important decision to be made, wasn't it the best location, wasn't it the best price, wasn't it some other questions in hindsight you can ask? The bottom line is, it was an important thing to do for our community. I'm glad it was done. We actually can ensure the rights that we have to drinking water for our, not only our generation, but future generations of Lodians.
Thank you very much for all of the questions from the audience, and thank you candidates for really, by my count, the only dodged one.